Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag with us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Gillespie.
Here.
Alderman Spivey.
Here.
Alderwoman Evans, excused as absent, Mayor Ford.
Present. Okay. Pastor?
Good evening. Let us pray. Make a joyful noise unto the Lord, all ye lands; serve the Lord with gladness; come before his presence with singing. We've come with singing in our hearts, thanking God for a brand-new year, allowing us to see 2020. And we come asking for him to lead us and to guide us as we go forth into this brand-new year. We come praying for our mayor, our council members, our fire department and police department, all the fine men and women who serve this great community. May God bless the residents of Country Club Hills, may God bless our troops, and may God bless America. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Alderman?
Journal of Proceedings, Approval of Minutes, the Regular City Council Meeting, January 13, 2020.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion, probably motion and second. Are there any questions, corrections? If all is in favor, let it be known by the sign of I.
I.
Okay, I's have it, the motion carries. At this time, we have communications from the mayor. And I just want to say that just like everyone else, we have lost a great, a great icon this weekend. And just let me say to the public, live your lives. Live your life to the fullness. Let's stop wasting time on things that doesn't matter. Let's don't, let's stop wasting time on things that does not matter. I know there's challenges that we have in life every day. But we need to understand that our destiny is already set. And we need to make sure that if we have a bucket list, that we go out and make things happen, the things that we want to happen in life. So once again, I'm encouraging the public, my peers, live life to the fullness because you don't know what your destiny is. And that's my thought for tonight. At this time, I would like to call for the city clerks' report.
Get the communications.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have the public here tonight that have been working hard over the holiday season to beautify their properties. And I want you to know how proud we are as a council that you do take time out of your schedules to make sure that your properties in good shape. And that's why we want to recognize you tonight. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Joanne Wade to come forward. The Environment, Environmental Commission members for our 2019 Holiday Housing Judgment Award recipients.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Braun Denton. I am the chairman of the Environmental Commission. I have Helen McClendon here and Onetta Outlaw with me from our commission. Joanne does a great job. She's our liaison. So what we do is for each ward, we have a winner, and then we have an overall winner. So if I call your name, please come up front and we'll give you your certificate, and then we'll take a picture. First place for Ward One, Anthony and Sharon King.
Anthony, Anthony, Anthony. Oh, you want me?
Um, Ward Two, second place Holiday House Award goes to Livia Davis, 4131 178, winning second place. It's by Mayor James W. For the City Council and Environmental Commission for your outstanding display of holiday lights for adding sparkle to our community, for our holiday season, for an even more beautiful Country Club Hills. Okay, now we go to Ward Two. We have Tony Boswell, 17547 Sycamore Avenue. Okay, for Ward Three, first place is the Schmidt Family, 4410 West 187th, 166th Place, Ricky.
All right, congratulations, and here's your check.
Ward Three, second place, Lemcella Nables, 4318 West 186th Street. Third place for this, uh, third ward, the Mahi Family, 17810 Rosewood Terrace. Uh, now we, oh, sorry. Oh, we had a tie for third. Oh, so this is the fourth ward. I'm confused. Ward Four, we have third place, Tyrone Nuttall, 4151 West 189th Street. Tyrone and a niece.
Congratulations.
Uh, second place for the fourth ward, Jeff and Margot Brown, 18640 Walnut Avenue.
Can I get in some, Mayor, can I get in some of these photos with you?
Um, Ward Four, first place, Reginald Lewis Family, 18641 Walnut Avenue. Ward Five, third place, Derek and Janine Bass, 18655 Laramie Road.
Ward Five.
We got more Aldermen, don't go away. Uh, Ward Five, second place, Amira and Ronone Smith, Kate Greer, 1901 John Avenue. Uh, Ward Five, first place, Susan and Glenn Vlach, 18951 Anthony Avenue. And then we have an overall winner from the whole city. It's Deborah and Jesse Walker, 4129 West 187th Street. Alderman Lockett.
Oh, my goodness. Gars, tell them who you are.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next year. You have to, oh, turn in your application at City Hall. There's always a box. You just put your name in, and then we come around and see you guys. Thank you very much.
Thanks again, and congratulations to all the winners. Once again, we do appreciate the hard work that you guys do and put in for the beautifications of your homes. Thank you again. So at this time, we're gonna move on with the agenda. Uh, and the next agenda item is the city clerks' report.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Uh, the city clerk's first mobile event went very well. Would like to thank Mr. Ross and the CRC staff for hosting. I'm sure they probably didn't know they were going to, but we had a great event. Cook County Clerk's rep was there for voter registration, and there are opportunities to earn between $200 and $400 in extra income to work on Election Day. Also, reminder, the presidential primary is upcoming on March 17th. We also had a representative from the U.S. Census for general information and opportunities to, again, work with the U.S. Census for extra income. So I do have a couple of items just to share with you. This is, this is one of the posters that you will see around town for the U.S. Census. Uh, the Alderman and the Treasurer and Mayor have one of their swag bags. I have a couple, extra one of these for, after the meeting as well. And we have some information on the table over to the right, and we have a couple of little fans as well. So just some information that we were also sharing at the mobile event. The last representative we had at the mobile event was the State Treasurer's Office for ICAS lookups. The state of Illinois currently has $2.9 billion in unclaimed funds for Illinoisans. To see if any of this money may be owed to you or your family member or friends, I need you to come out to the clerk's next mobile event, which will be Friday, February 7th, between 6:00 and 8:00, at the CRC for the All-Stars Night, as well as Saturday, February 8th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., again at the All-Stars. 4709 West 179th Street, our CRC. Upcoming events, we have a daddy and daughter dance. Again, the theme is Frozen, February 8th, 2020, at the lower level of City Hall, 6:30 p.m. And a reminder that City Hall will be closed Monday, February 17th, in observance of President's Day, and will resume normal business hours on Tuesday, February 18th, at 8:00 a.m. Last item, a reminder, the annual Black History Play is coming up Saturday, February 29th, at Hillcrest High School, 175th and Pulaski, at 3:00 p.m. Our next meeting will be held after this one, Monday, February 3rd, an admin meeting at 7:00 p.m. End of report.
All right, thank you. Next, we have on the agenda, we want the city collectors' report.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of December, ending December 31st, the General Fund had $703,053.79 MFT, $123,462, excuse me, dollars and six cents. And the Water and Sewer Fund, $378,994.65, totaling $1,205,510.50. End of report.
Thank you. Next, we have the city treasurer's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our bank balance as of December 31st was $1,906,603.24. In December, we had revenues of $1,143,736.12. We had expenses of $1,903,101.22. Our expenses exceeded our revenues for December in the amount of $759,365.10. And our bank balance as of this morning is $2,469,117.89. End of my report.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll go to the committee reports, and the first committee we have tonight would be the Finance Committee, and that's Alderman Lockett, the chair.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, second council's approval for vouchers in the amount of $230,125.50.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? If not, I have a motion and a second. I need a roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Spivey.
Yes.
All right, thank you. The motion carries.
Just to mention that the next finance meeting will be February 6th at 12:00 p.m. End of my report.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh, next committee is Law and Order and Government Operation. Alderman Gillespie is the chair.
Uh, no report at this time.
All right. Public Works and Utilities, Alderman Davis, the chairman.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, next meeting is gonna be February 4th at 4:30. And I do want to encourage any resident, we're gonna be discussing the Homeward Disposal Contract, our refuse garbage collection, and we will have a representative there. So if somebody has concerns, or it'd be a good idea to attend that meeting because we're gonna be potentially renewing that contract, so, end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Uh, next report is Economic Development, Planning, Zoning. Alderman Spivey is the chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to announce, we have two restaurants coming to town hooking reels. Will be, um, coming into the property of the old Applebee's. They're located here in the Midwest. It's a seafood place, so it'd be really nice for the community. And we also have a seafood shack that'll be coming to 183rd Street, next to Baba's, uh, soon, very soon. So they're going through the process of getting permits and stuff like that. So, uh, look forward to having those two restaurants here in town, Mayor. End of my report.
Thank you. This is a good choice for our city. Uh, next, we have, okay, anything on insurance risk management?
No report at the time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, I need a motion to open the floor to the public.
Motion, open the floor to the public.
Second.
Okay, public, uh, it's been probably motion and second. Public, if you would like to address the council, please come forward and limit your time to two, three minutes or less. Anyone from the public? You had to go to the mic, ma'am. Okay, no problem.
On the meeting for the disposal, he said it's on February the 4th.
The 4th.
4:30.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Just let you know, uh, starting the month of February, April, and March, uh, we'll be providing free tax services for anybody in the Southland who income for individuals, 30,000 or less, or for 50,000, 56,000 for a family, a household, ladder up. I'm the site manager over Bloom Township, uh, on Saturdays from 8:00 to 4:00, and Mondays from 4:30 to 9:00. We'll be providing pre-tax services for any of those residents in the Southland that qualify. Thank you.
How do we sign up?
Uh, you just come, it's first come, first served. I'm gonna leave you some information tomorrow, and you can just put it out for the residents. I'm going to all the city council meetings to let them, everybody know.
Great, thanks, we appreciate it.
Excuse me, sir, can you state your name for my records, please?
Former Alderman Steve Burris.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Tony Boswell. I'd like to, um, first of all, thank the mayor for taking time out to come on a Saturday to my house personally. And, uh, we did get the result.
Two signs, huh?
Exactly. Now, I appreciate that, but we still got one more thing to tackle.
Okay.
And, um, it's the lighting. But I really appreciate that. That really, really gonna save a lot of lives and a lot of accidents on that block. I really do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and we'll, we'll work on the lighting also.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else?
Motion to close the floor to the public?
Second.
Okay, it's been probably motion and second. All those in favor, let it be. Nobody signed a I.
I.
Okay, the motion carries. I's have it. Uh, the floor is now closed. At this time, we want to entertain the Aldomatic Report, and we'll start with Alderman Davis tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to congratulate the winners again of the holiday decoration. It, it does, it does enhance the beautification of our city, and, um, I just want to congratulate you again. Also, I want to, um, announce Cornerstone Christian Fellowship. They're having their food pantry, and it's gonna be the 29th, which is this Wednesday, and it's gonna be from 10:00 o'clock to 12:00 o'clock, and it's for anybody. You don't have to be a resident, and it's, the address is 4101 West Flossmore Road. And that's the, end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Alderman Lockett?
Thank you. Once again, I'd like to thank all the residents that participated in the holiday, um, decoration contests. And, um, I, I just want to just kind of reiterate what the mayor was saying about living your life, you know, it's, it's troubling, troublesome that, you know, that Kobe Bryant, and not only him and his daughter, but the other passengers on that plane, that they all lost their lives, and, you know, they were, they were all traveling for a purpose, to be with their kids and do good things for them and that. And it's just, it's just heartbreaking that, you know, um, that it happened that way, and, you know, just want to keep a lot of love in your heart and think, think about your, your family, your neighbors, your children, your grandchildren and that, and just build from there. End of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Lockett, Alderman Spivey. I forgot his name. Alderman Gillespie.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Mr. and Mrs. King for their continuation and they, uh, making the city a much beautiful and a, uh, place for us to live within. The, these are residents that not just get one award, they get award on a annual base continuously. So I appreciate those people, the resident within, especially within the first ward of Country Club Hills, for doing a good job in keeping our city clean and keeping it beautiful. And for those that are interested in the meeting for February 4th, 2020, that would take place at City Hall again at 4:30 p.m. And I know we, some of us have complaints regarding the garbage not being picked up, not, well, sometime, I've had people that come over and ask me, complain to me in regards to their garbage not being picked up. And for those that has problem with the large items that are not being picked up, I'm sure that you have had that problem in the past. So we're having a meeting on the 4th of February at 4:30 at City Hall at 7:00 p.m. It's 6:00 p.m.
No.
No, 4:30, I'm sorry. 4:30 p.m. So make sure that you make preparation to be here, and voice your opinion, voice your complaint, or whatever it is that you have in regards to this matter. And keep up the good work, keep our city safe, keep our city clean and safe. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Gillespie. Alderman Spivey?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to thank all the residents that came out tonight that received the beautification awards, especially the fourth ward. Thank you, guys, for, um, um, keeping the fourth ward and the city itself. Thank you guys for, um, um, keeping the Fourth Ward and the city itself very looking, very beautiful. I appreciate that. I know you appreciate it, that's why you do it, and, uh, thank you very much. Also, I wanna, uh, take time out to, uh, thank Jerry Townsend for taking care of some light fixtures here in the 404. There's a light, uh, that's still out over on Keeler, and, uh, I think there's Keeler and Flossmore, but, um, we have an order out with, uh, Comet that's gonna come out and take care of that. Also, I would like to thank, uh, Captain, uh, excuse me, Deputy Chief Richmond for, um, securing the 404. He's been very present in the 404, him and his staff, and I really, uh, appreciate that, picking up the heightness in the, uh, strip malls off, off on Pulaski and, um, 167th Street. The Mayor spoke about, um, Kobe Bryant, Alderman Lockett, you know, within the last, I think from November up to, up into January, we lost a lot of our seniors here throughout Country Club Hills, and specifically the, uh, Fourth Ward. There's a, you know, as, you know, it was like, it was like natural causes, so to speak, you know, and a lot of our seniors has, uh, made their transition, and then this incident with Kobe Bryant and his family and the other teammates and stuff like that, I think that was very, um, tragic. And as the Mayor said, said earlier about live your life, you know, definitely you have to, and, um, I just think that we all need to, uh, do what we can and enjoy ourselves and step up and help each other. End of my report.
Thank you, Alderman. Okay, at this time, uh, I wanna acknowledge a card that we received from Teresa Ann Jimmison. Uh, she, uh, passed away in December 28th. She's a former Alderman of the First Ward, and, uh, most of us attended her funeral, and the family is saying, I wanna say thank you to the city and all the residents who prayed for the family, so let's continue to hold that family up in prayers, uh, and especially Kobe's family, and all of those who have lost a loved one. Let's keep everyone in our prayers.
Also, Mayor, can I be recognized one more time? Uh, I have a, a gentleman coming out from, from the Cook County Commissioner's Office in March, uh, his name is Jordan Sorrell, and he's gonna be attending the 404 meeting, so we can move forward on that later, and the, uh, and I think it's like the first or second week, we discussed over the weekend moving forward, and he's gonna have some information that he'll pass out through, um, our meeting in the 404, and I will disseminate that throughout the area.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just received another note that, uh, Mr. Edward Wilson, uh, will be 104 years young on January the 30th of 2020. Now, that's...
Longevity.
That's longevity, and he lives here in, in town. But we have some others that has reached that age as well, and so what I would like to do with the cooperation of the council, one day I would like to invite all of those citizens who are 100-plus here for a luncheon during the day, and just, you know, talk to these guys because, and ladies, because you find that these individuals have a lot of history. They can share a lot with you, and so we need to learn from our, from our, um, seniors. And so I would like to do that one day, and I think I mentioned that to Eric Booker already, so maybe that would be something that all of us can come out, if you're available, and just, uh, you know, communicate with these, uh, individuals that's 100-plus years. 104, mm, don't think I'll make it that way. That, I don't think I'll make it 104, but that's a great accomplishment, so we, we appreciate, uh, just knowing that and celebrating his birthday on, uh, January the 30th of 2020. Okay, if that's all, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Before I close, if, any of you out there that your, um, kids or, or your husband, your wife, your niece, your nephew, your uncle, your grandmom, or your granddaddy, somebody need a job and don't have a job?
Yeah.
We got jobs in the Southland, the Census, okay? They hiring, you need work, they pay for you to go out to do the surveys, so anyone's looking for a job, there's no excuse, I can't find a job. You got a job. 2020.
And some of the jobs pays up to $30 an hour, believe it or not. They start at 15, they go up to 30. Yes, and that's a good wage. I'm glad you mentioned, um, I'm glad you mentioned the Census, because, um, I wanted to say something else as well.
We gotta be counted.
Yeah, there you go. Uh, we will lose, we will lose, uh, $14,000 per person that's not counted, and, uh, if we have too many of those, we'll end up using, losing a congressional seat as well. We don't wanna lose a congressional seat. We wanna make sure that we count each and every individual, because we wanna make sure that we get every $14,000 we can get. So, um, step up and help us to, uh, pull this off and be counted. Thank you very much.
So what he's saying, that if, uh, Lil Pookie comes over to your house and eats street nights out of the week, or there for dinner, then he lives there. Yeah. Make sure he's counted.
All right.
Motion, um, for adjournment?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be nobody, sign of aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. If you would like to speak to the Mayor or the Councilmen, please come forward.